Okay, so I'll let you know we are go for recording. All right.
Okay. Well, before we get started this evening, first, let me say welcome to everyone. I know we've been saying hello as we've been getting started. But there's an opportunity here for our rising sixth grade Phoenixes to discuss some video conferencing etiquette for tonight. So if you would, keep your microphone muted for the first components that we're going to share with you guys this evening. And there will be an opportunity to unmute our mics if we need to. If you do have questions along the way, you can write them down to save for the end, or you can type them into the chat feature in the Google Hangouts Meet. If your camera's on, keep your tasks professional. Don't do anything on camera that you don't want anybody to see. And try to minimize your distractions by cutting off any other devices or TVs around that might have your attention. This meeting is being recorded and will be shared with everybody at the end of the meeting. So if you can't remember something that we said, no worries. We're going to send you not only a copy of this presentation so that you have access to all the links that are included in in this presentation, but you'll have access to the recording as well. So without further ado, we're going to start off with some administrative introductions. And we'll start that out with an introduction of our school principal, Ms. Laura Hunter.
Hi, everyone. Please excuse the wonky headphones, but I I have three boys, twin, 10 year olds and a 13 year old, and they can be loud at my house. So I am wearing my son's gamer headphones this afternoon or evening so that I can block them out a little bit. My name is Laura Hunter, and I am the founding principal at Glow Academy, which means I've been around at Glow since its inception. We opened our doors in the class in the year 2016 to our first incoming class of sixth graders. We now have sixth, seventh, eighth, ninth grade. Next year, we'll add another grade for 10th grade. So we are slowly building out until we graduate our first graduating senior class in 2023. As I said, I'm the founding principal. Before I became principal at Glow, I was an administrator in Brunswick County. And before I was administrator in Brunswick County, I was a teacher. I taught high school history for 13 years before I left the classroom and became an administrator. So I'm a teacher at heart, and I step into classrooms as often as I can to continue that journey with our glow students.
Thank you, Ms. Hunter. I'm now going to introduce myself. I'm Paige Garza. I'm the vice principal at Glow Academy. This is my second year at Glow, so finishing up my first year. Prior to being with Glow Academy, I was in Brunswick County Schools, in Brunswick County Schools over 14 years in that county. I served as a high school teacher and as a curriculum instructional specialist for six, 12 social studies and world languages. I am a mother of three girls, so I'm all girls at home and all girls at work. And sometimes by night, I serve as an adjunct college professor of the humanities and sociology and psychology. And I am so thankful to be a part of this amazing Glow team. Now for a little bit of our Glow history, Ms. Hunter.
Yeah, so it's important to know that Glow doesn't just exist by itself. So those of you who don't know, Glow is actually part of a sisterhood of schools nationwide. There are actually now 19 schools in this sisterhood. Ms. Garza, if you'll go to the next slide, you can get a sense for how many schools there are. So Glow is part of something called the Student Leadership Network. We're an affiliate with the Student Leadership Network. It was formerly known as the Young Women's Leadership Network. And there are schools in New York City, in across the state of Texas, in Baltimore, in St. Louis, in Chicago, and Rochester, New York, us here in Wilmington, and then most recently, a school opened up in Kansas City. We all share the same mission and the same purpose. In fact, we are part of a network of schools that came about in the mid 1990s. We were the first public schools across the country in about 30 years to do all girls' education. And so we share a similar mission to honor the tradition of public schools, to educate girls from all different walks of life. And and we 100% share the mission of high school graduation, college enrollment, and success, and supporting our young women as they enter into the world as professional women, seeking professional success and personal success in in their family lives and in their relationships. So we we all share that mission. We share the work. I just was on a phone call with principals across the network on Friday. We are in close collaboration with each other. So it's important for you to know that we don't do this alone. We share this sisterhood and this model across the country in all different walks of life. Ms. Garza? Ms. Garza, I think you're muted.
It muted me. Interesting. Can we hear me now?
Yep.
Perfect. Okay, so now we are going to introduce our fabulous sixth grade team. So let's get ready for some introductions. Here we go. Meredith Staley.
Somebody is broadcasting their screen. Linda Porter, you're presenting.
There you go.
Thank you, Ms. Fernandez. All right, go, Ms. Staley.
Hi, guys. My name is Meredith Staley. I'm the school social worker at Glow Academy. I've been with Glow for about a year and a half. And probably the biggest part of my role is just supporting students, supporting families, connecting folks to resources in the community, doing groups at school, just being a shoulder to cry on, hopefully not sneeze on. All those people go back in the fall, but just there to support students. So I definitely spend a lot of time with our sixth grade kiddos.
Thank you, Ms. Staley. Mrs. Pap Shelton.
Hey, everybody. I am Melissa Pap Shelton. This is my seventh year teaching ELA. This is my second year at Glow Academy, and I love books and sentences and all kinds of things, and I'm excited to go on this journey again.
Thank you, Ms. Pap Shelton. Mrs. Sharp.
Ms. Sharp isn't here yet, but I will tell you that Ms. Sharp is fabulous in all things related to social studies. This year, Ms. Sharp will be teaching both sixth and seventh grade social studies and will be working very hard with all of your Glow Girls right out of the gate. So she is teaching sixth grade social studies starting in in August. And she is fabulous, and girls love feeling empowered with history in her class.
Mr. Mitro.
Hi, guys. I'm your sixth grade science teacher. I enjoy bringing a lot of hands-on applications to the classroom, whether it's building rockets and launching them outside or if we're doing a unit on plants and working outside. In fact, I'm actually outside in my garden right now checking on my butternuts. So I look forward to seeing everyone next year.
Thank you, Mr. Mitro. Mrs. Gamble.
Hi, everybody. I'm Mrs. Gamble, Gabby Gamble. This is going to be my fourth year coming up at Glow Academy, and it's absolutely wonderful. I am one of the exceptional children's teacher, and I'm also excited to be a leadership advisory teacher again this school year.
Thank you, Ms. Gamble. Mrs. Tomlin.
Hi, everybody. I am Carrie Tomlin. I am finishing up my 25th year of teaching, and this is the end of my first year at Glow Academy. I have taught literally every grade, starting at pre-K all the way up through high school. But I love middle school, and I'm excited to be back in sixth grade teaching math.
Thank you, Mrs. Tomlin. Mrs. Kozlowski.
Hi, everybody. I'm Stephanie Kozlowski. This is going to be my 10th year teaching and my third year at Glow. I'm going to be an exceptional children's teacher for Language Arts this year, so I'm very excited to be teaching here.
Thank you. Mrs. Adams.
Hey, everybody. I'm Jenny Adams. I'm going to be the sixth and seventh grade social studies teacher this year. And this is my coming up on my fourth year at Glow, and I think it's my 15th year teaching. But I am very excited to be with Glow.
We're starting to get hazy after a while, don't they, Ms. Adams? Mr. Jones.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jerry Jones. I'll be teaching sixth and seventh grade science and a little bit of high school this coming this coming school year. I'll be I'll be starting my third year of teaching at Glow this coming this coming year. I spent the past 15, 16 years as a professional chemist here in Wilmington before before education found me. I was an environmental chemist and a lab manager for a local company here in town. But I switched to education, and I haven't looked back since.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Ms. Hunter, you want to give us some information about our mystery teacher?
We we are currently in the process of hiring a new AIG math teacher. We have added a new position to our Glow team this year, and we are in the process of finding that right fit teacher. So at this moment, I don't know who that person is, but they're going to be fabulous, whoever they turn out to be.
Thank you. So now we're going to segue into some important details, especially as we're moving through a day at Glow, some questions that we're going to try to answer that we're predicting that you may have. First, our school calendar for 2020, 2021.
So I don't so the world of COVID-19 has made us step back and revisit our school calendar. So the one that's up on our website actually just got amended last Thursday night by our Glow School Board. So our new Glow School Calendar has a starting school on August 17. That'll be our first day of school. We will end our first semester December 18. And then we'll start back for second semester January 7 and finish school for the school year on May 21. It's important for you to know that Glow is both a middle school and a high school. And our high school students take classes in multiple different places. So they take classes on campus at Glow. Some of our students take classes through our Early Risers Program in a partnership with Cape Fear Community College. And some of our students take classes on campus through North Carolina Virtual Public School. And because we have three different schedules out there, Cape Fear Community College, NCVPS, and Glow Academy, we have to make that schedule work within our Glow schedule. So so welcome to the world of middle school and high school schedules at Glow Academy. The wonderful thing about this is our middle school students get a little taste of what high school looked like before they ever get there. So they get to experience exam week in December and also again in May with their high school counterparts or high school sisters.
Thank you, Ms. Hunter. Our 2020, 2021 bell schedule.
Right, so following what Ms. Hunter said, there are some things that we know, some things that we don't know, right? So we do know that this is what our schedule will typically look like for our incoming sixth grade student. They'll start with leadership advisory in the morning for about 42 minutes or so. Well, for the first semester, we know that their first core will be an elective. They'll transition to throughout the day through courses two, three, and four. Our lunch schedule, because we have so many students on campus, is broken up into three different sessions. The A lunch is during Core Two and B C lunch during Core Three. And they'll find out their assignments as we move through the semester. We have five-minute transitions this year, but we don't quite know what that looks like, right? So we don't know if students will be leaving the classroom, teachers will be changing classrooms. All those questions are still up in the air. So bear with us as we figure all that stuff out. But this is the the base schedule for what your students' day will look like. 90-minute blocks mimicking the high school experience. We're going to do some work this year.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Our elective course offerings for the middle school.
The Glow Academy offers an amazing number of electives for students to take. Some of the pictures, some of the things include culinary arts, PE, dance, art, and STEM classes. All of those are listed on the screen. The kids rotate through those each quarter. And the teachers that teach those classes are phenomenal artists or dancers or musicians or scientists in their own right. So they really can give the kids a fantastic experience.
Thank you, Ms. Tomlin. So one of the things that will be available to you when we get finished this evening is that sixth graders can register for their elective courses. Within this presentation, you'll actually be able to click this picture, or we have the link at the end of the presentation so that you can choose three elective courses. So students will have the opportunity to take four elective courses during the year in quarters. But one of those is going to be Helpful Living. That is a requirement for all of our middle school students to take one quarter of Helpful Living. But you get to choose three more. So when you're finished this evening, make sure that you check out this Google form and register for the elective courses of your choosing. Having your own devices. Ms. Hunter, will you speak a little bit about this piece?
Sure. So here's the deal, guys. We have just gone through a global pandemic, and the way we are thinking about school has changed. And I would argue it's changed for the good because it's forcing us to shift and change in education in ways that I think is going to actually be more supportive of students. One of the things that we know is that universities have moved ahead of us and have been engaging in online learning and blended learning environments for at least a decade. But public school, K-12, has been a little bit slow to that charge. One of the great things next year is that we get to offer a one-to-one learning environment with our for our kids so that every kid that walks in the door at Glow will be given a Chromebook at Glow to use throughout the entire year. In fact, we have students that have Chromebooks now at home who are doing virtual learning with us. They get to keep them through the summer to continue doing learning with us. So every kiddo that comes on to campus next year will get a Chromebook that will live with her. She will bring it to school. She will be able to take it home. With our sixth graders, this is going to require some education early on about how to take care of your Chromebook, how to move about the building safely, how to make sure it's charged. There's going to be a lot of supports that go into place for our for our newly entering into the world of middle school sixth graders. But we'll be there to support her in that journey. That means that all of her classes will have some online components to them and some in-class components. And what you see here in this picture is that computers are a tool that blend very well with the learning that is happening at Glow Academy. So it will not be entirely in front of a screen, but computers will be a tool by which kids are able to research, collaborate with each other, and also complete assignments and turn them in.
Okay, so grading with rubrics. Why will all assignments that are not multiple choice have rubrics? Well, that's because kids and parents should always know why you got the grade that you did. But more importantly, you should know how to get the grade you want. We're taking all the guessing out of the grading game.
Ms. Garza, again, you're muted. Sorry about that.
It's okay. You're going to have to unmute me.
I I can't from my end. Sorry. I tried.
We'll figure it out.
Perfect.
So when it when it comes to grading rubrics, Ms. Pap Shelton is absolutely right. We want our Glow Girls to feel empowered when it comes to their grades. And one of the ways that we do that is we're very transparent about how we're being graded so that we can work ultimately towards the grade goals that we want. And that feels and looks different when it comes to to grading at Glow compared to other schools. So parents, you'll be able to really help your Glow Girls be successful when it comes to tackling their assignments. Our middle school grading scale for next year.
Okay, so middle school grading scale is on a 10-point scale. So A, 92, 100, B, 80 to 89, C, 70 to 79, D, 60 to 69, and then anything below 59 is an F. You can also see an INC. If that is on a report card, that means incomplete. Rubrics will be used when applicable. And Glow Middle School students will be graded on a 10-point scale, and it is reflective of the North Carolina High School grading scale. It is also in the Glow Middle School Handbook.
Thank you. Speaking of our middle school handbook.
So our middle school handbook has critical registration information, AIG program information. It has our college-bound CASI information and also our exploratory electives. Our College Access and Success Initiative CASI has four cornerstones: initiative, awareness, application, and acceptance. And more information can be found in the handbook on pages five through eight.
Thank you, Mrs. Pap Shelton. Uniforms at Glow Academy.
Hi, folks. I'm going to jump in here. I think that Ms. Staley, our social worker, was going to talk about uniforms, but oh, here she's back. Ms. Staley, uniforms.
I'm back, I think. I'm sorry I'm having technology malfunctions. I cannot see the presentation right now, but I think I got it done pat. So you might ask yourself why uniforms. Glow, we have uniforms. So all of the schools that Ms. Hunter had talked about earlier are the Young Women's Leadership School Network. Uniforms are a requirement. So part of the reason why we wear uniforms is to create professionalism for our student body and to create a unified culture for our school. So that is why uniforms. So I'll talk to you about the different items that you could wear. So for tops, you can wear either a purple or yellow glow polo, which you have to get at the custom logo wear uniform store. That could be a short sleeve. That could be a long sleeve. They're really nice colors. The bottoms that you're allowed to wear, there have been a major addition for this upcoming school year, which is really exciting. And I think you guys are probably going to be the first ones to know. I don't think the rest of the student body knows about the new addition. So in previous years, we've done navy pants and navy shorts. But now we're expanding, and we're going to have black shorts or black pants as well. In addition to that, you can wear the gray or plaid skirt that you could get at the uniform store. They're really cute. And then, once you get to become a fancy high schooler, you get the option of wearing cats, pants, shorts, or skirts. So just make sure with the bottoms, no yoga pants, no gym clothes type pants. You might see at the uniform store, they do have an option for sweatpants. They have an option for gym shorts. Those are only for like our dance class where you can change out and also for, you know, P, helping PE where you would change out. So not unfortunately not something you can wear just on the reg at Glow, but just for those classes. For outerwear, you do have to get the outerwear at the Glow Local or at the Glow Uniform Store, which I think is on the screen. I don't have the I don't know what screen is up right now. It's called Custom Logo Wear. It's out in Ogden. The address and information should be on the screen. But for outerwear, students, you can't wear their own personal jackets and outerwear in the school building during the day unless it has the Glow logo. So the options that they have there, they have quite a variety. There's a cardigan. There's a zip-up fleece, which is really nice and cozy. There's a rain jacket. And then there's a sweatshirt, and the sweatshirt is a really affordable option. It's 1580, I think, on the website. The uniform store has been very awesome in working with our students that it is out in Ogden. Some people don't live anywhere close to Ogden, so you can actually pay online, and then they will send it to the school, and then we'll deliver it straight to your classroom. So something else to know about uniforms is that Glow provides one free uniform to incoming students. So you could either get a top and a bottom, or I've learned that you could also do a top and an outerwear item. Might be a good idea to wait until a little bit closer to school starting because we know that middle schoolers grow so much over the summers as we're all sitting at home eating our quarantine snacks. So maybe just wait and buy uniforms, maybe a size bigger, so that they could definitely grow into them. And if anybody has any issues and needs assistance with uniforms, they can absolutely reach out to me, and we'll work with you on making sure that we get you set for the school year.
Thank you, Ms. Staley.
Ms. Garza, can I jump in here really quickly?
Yeah.
So parents, just a heads up. I've been in this game now for four years, and I'm going to tell you that middle school girls are going to give you some hard times about wearing school uniforms. And that is going to be the way that it goes. And you and I and the rest of our Glow Team are going to be on the same page about this. Uniforms are a requirement. It's not optional. It is mandatory. It is important for our Glow Girls to understand that you walk into the building ready to be a learner. That's your job, and we suit up for our jobs because we are taking this seriously. It is also their job as middle school girls to push back on rules and to exert their independence. We're in it. We get it. That's the way middle school goes, claiming their independence. But parents, we have to be on the same page. Uniforms are not negotiable. I've got your back if you've got my back on this one. All right, thanks, Ms. Garza.
Absolutely. 2020, 2021 blended classrooms. Can can you guys hear me? Okay.
Yes, Ms. Garza, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. I kept unmuted. It kept muting me, just making sure. So Ms. Hunter already touched base on this a little bit. In 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 reaction to, in response to this global pandemic, Glow Academy has done something quite amazing. We have successfully rolled out Glow Virtual Academy, which is an online virtual platform for learning. All of our teachers have engaged in virtual learning with their students now for the past eight weeks successfully. And we are not only proud of that success, but we're going to push that success right into next school year. So next year, what we're going to be doing, and we kind of saw an image of that earlier, is we are going to be continuing to use our Canvas platform. This is a digital platform where we house courses online. And we're going to integrate this virtual platform into our onsite classrooms. And there's a lot of pieces about this that are going to really enhance learning for students. For one, students and parents will be able to not just access grades through this Canvas course shell, but you'll also be able to see all of the assignments that are being assigned during the week, rubrics for assignments that maybe students are working on for the week, video lectures, collaborative opportunities online. In addition to that, our blended classrooms are going to In addition to that, our blended classrooms are going to allow us to do something really important. We are aware that next year is going to look different, and we're not even sure yet how different that is going to be because we are all still in quarantine and still riding this thing out. But here's what we can predict. We can predict that at some point, there may be a reason that we have to be quarantined again. And we can predict that even if that doesn't happen as a whole school or as an entire county or state or nation, we can predict that at some point, there may be students that have to be quarantined due to COVID-19 exposure for two weeks. And we want to make sure that if we can predict those things can happen, that we can prevent students from losing learning time. And so when we first enter the first few weeks of school, we'll be learning a lot about our Chromebooks, as discussed earlier. And we'll be learning a lot about our blended classrooms so that if in the event we have to move into a virtual space, it will not be something that we have to learn that is new. It will be something that we already know how to do. And didn't mean to rhyme, but it worked. Curriculum at Glow Academy.
I think it's all you, Ms. Garza.
Okay, let's do it. All right, our curriculum at Glow Academy. So in sixth grade, students can expect to take a leadership advisory course. Our leadership advisory course will be with the same group of students every morning. It's a real opportunity for students to socially and emotionally grow together and bond with their Glow sisters. In addition to that, we'll be heavily learning some of those technology pieces that we need to in connection to being a one-to-one school. Outside of leadership advisory, as we already saw in our course schedule, students will be enrolled in their English Language Arts, Math Class, Social Studies first semester, and Science second semester. And then they will have the opportunity to take four elective courses, as we mentioned before, one of those being Healthful Living.
Ms. Garza, before you go any further, I know that we have one of our electives teachers that is on this meeting right now who wasn't in the introductions. Can I invite Mr. Davis to introduce himself to the crew, please?
Please.
Hello, myriads of people in boxes on my Google meets. My name is Mr. Grayson. I am the art teacher. I've been at Glow for three years now. Man, a whole lot of fantastic years. Outside of teaching at Glow, I'm actually a working artist outside of that. So with all questions, please ask them to me if you have questions about art. Other than that, it's just a whole bunch of wild fun art stuff.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Testing in the middle school. Ms. Hunter, will you bring us into this conversation?
Yeah, so because we're a middle school and a high school, and because we're a North Carolina public charter school, there are a lot of questions that parents and kids have about testing when it comes to their experience at Glow. I want to first start by saying that Glow is a North Carolina public school. That means that we follow the North Carolina Public School standard course of study for all of the courses that Ms. Garza mentioned before. And we also do all of the assessments that any North Carolina public school would give. That means that our middle school program, we do quarterly check-ins for reading and math at the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade levels. And eighth grade science is also tested, so we do quarterly check-ins for science as well. All of our Glow students will take reading and math EOGs at the end of the school year. We also give a universal screener, and that is an opportunity for us to get a baseline understanding of where every kid is when they enter into each grade level. And then we give one, that same test in the middle of the year and at the end of the year to track that data as well. We don't want to overwhelm kids with tests. And so we opt not to give North Carolina final exams in science or social studies, but rather to focus on reading and math supports at our middle school level just so that kids don't have an overwhelming number of tests, especially at the end of the school year. We know that causes a lot of anxiety. It can be a little overwhelming, and we definitely don't want that for our kids. At the eighth grade level, kids start to get some different options. One of those options is to either take eighth grade math or Math 1. Math 1 is a high school course. At our eighth grade level also, some of our students will have the opportunity to take courses that are in our high school. So some of our students will have a chance to take also Earth and Environmental Science, which is a freshman-level course or a high school course, maybe World History, which is a freshman-level course. So because we're a middle school and a high school, we give our kids that opportunity to expand into the high school curriculum a little bit earlier. And in the case of Math 1, that also means that they have to take a high school EOC or End of Course Exam that is at the high school level.
Fantastic. Thank you, Ms. Hunter. Specifically, Ms. Hunter, can you talk to us a little bit about how parents can follow their Glow girls' progress throughout the school year?
Absolutely. So here's the deal. Your getos are moving out of elementary school into middle school. Students that are on this call with us, this is so an exciting moment for you. Gone are the days of elementary school, kind of babyland, and we're moving into middle school land. And that means being more responsible for your own learning, being responsible for communication with your parents and with your teachers, self-advocacy for yourselves, being in control a little bit more of your grades and your progress forward. All of this is natural and appropriate. Moving into adulthood, moving towards that place where you can manage your own life. But this is also hard. It's hard for students to learn how to do that. It's also hard for parents to let go of the real comfort of elementary school, which is where you have lots and lots and lots of communication from parents, from teachers. So here's what we're going to do. We're going to make this transition a little bit easier for you parents. We are going to make sure that you have the tools that you need. I'm going to stop right here. Ms. Garza, we're getting feedback from your computer. I'm going to mute you, but it's going to be complicated. You're going to have to unmute yourself, okay?
Okay.
So moving into a place next year, you can expect for sure to get a weekly Sunday update call from me every Sunday night at 5:30 in the afternoon, giving you a lay of the land for the week across our school. You're also going to get a weekly sixth-grade team newsletter that gives you the information that you need to know about what your kiddo is studying that week and what might be coming up. So if she has an assessment coming up or a project coming up, what to keep your eyes on the prize for at home and kind of gently prod her. Hey, have you studied for your test? Hey, have you started on that project that I know is due on Friday? Those kinds of things. In addition, you're going to have an opportunity to sign up for Remind, which is a great way that teachers on our sixth-grade team will communicate with you as parents, either through text message or through email. And because we are housing our Glow courses, all 73 of them, on Canvas next year, you will be able to sign in as an observer and be able to see what assignment she's working on, what discussion she's engaged with in class, and be able to track her grades there. So you can pop your head in and see how she's doing and then have strategic conversations with her about what she's doing to maximize her success and to set herself up for success. We strongly encourage our parents, as we are starting on this middle school journey together, to help your Glow girl be a self-advocate. So don't fight her battles for her. Don't go around her to talk to teachers. Of course, if there's an issue, reach out to us for sure. But the first step is to encourage her to have those conversations with her teachers, to support her self-advocacy, her independence, her voice in taking responsibility for her education, but also for her future. This is hard. I'm the parent of a seventh grader currently, and believe me, he does not do this well. We are constantly on this journey and have been there for the last two years. And it takes every ounce of my well-being, right, to not step in and manage his life for him. Sometimes I do, right? But I have to trust the journey and I have to support him in being a leader in his own life because ultimately, he is going to move out, hopefully, and go out on his own and be in charge of that. So this is a journey that we're on together. Parents, we are going to be supporting her voice at home. I mean, at school, if you can do that at home, we'll work together as a team. All right, Ms. Garza, sorry, back to you. So on the screen in front of you are some links. Not to worry, I'm going to send these out in an email after this presentation is over. But on this link screen, you can see that there are some tasks. The first task is registering for middle school electives. So all of our incoming sixth graders, otherwise from here on out known as the Class of 2027, because at Glow, we always have that vision towards high school graduation, college enrollment, and a lifetime of success. So the Class of 2027 will be able to register for middle school electives starting tonight. Remember, she's going to pick three out of probably five or six choices that she really, really wants. We are inviting parents to join our Remind code, our Remind for the Class of 2023. This code will follow her throughout her journey at Glow Academy. The way to do that is to text the code on the screen, the code that I'll send you to a number, and then to add our code or the registration code in. Here's another opportunity. Great. Ms. Stevens, I see in your chat on the side, I'm going to email it out. So if you don't see it on the screen in front of you, I get that. You'll be able to see it when I email it to you. We know that we've been out of school for a while now, and we have various sundry ways that learning has been supported. If you are like me, I have three children. Those three children have had three very different experiences in this land of virtual learning. What we want to do is give parents and kids an opportunity to stay engaged in really important ways in math and reading through the summer so that we don't have a lot of slide back. Because by the time we go back to school, we will have been out for almost 20 weeks, which is a lot. So we have made it available to all of our Glow families to have access as a guest to Glow Virtual Academy. If you want your girl to be engaged in a program for reading and a program for math over the summer that she can log into, she can be engaged in, purely optional, not required, but strongly encouraged. There is a link here that allows for you to sign up for that, and one of our teachers will be in touch to help get you connected. And finally, on the screen is the Glow Academy website. So if you have information or questions, you can go to the Glow website and get more information. And of course, you can reach out to Ms. Garza or myself or anybody on the sixth-grade team, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. All right, so speaking of questions, I know a lot of you have questions for us that we maybe didn't touch on. And I invite you to unmute your screen and ask those. I'm going to ask Ms. Fernandez to translate what I just said into Spanish in case we have some Spanish-speaking families that have a question, but need a translator.
Buenas noches, familias. Ahorita la directora preguntó si algunas de ustedes que hablan español tienen preguntas sobre algo de la escuela. Ahorita es el tiempo para preguntar.
All right, so Glow families, who has a question out there that you think would be important to answer right now?
When do we start school?
Hi, great question. So we start school in August, August 17th, but that is a great segue. Normally, at Glow Academy, we host something called Summer Bridge Camp. And Summer Bridge Camp is an opportunity that we create for students to get to know each other because going to middle school can be a little bit scary sometimes, or at least make us pretty nervous because there are a lot of people at Glow that you don't know. So we try to create opportunities for our incoming sixth graders to get to know each other so that you're not entering into the building without anybody who's your friend. But this year is a little bit different. Because we are in the land of COVID-19, we're not so sure that having a week-long camp on campus this summer is the best idea. So we are moving Summer Bridge Camp into a different model. So this summer, over the course of several weeks in in July, sorry, I'm losing my summer months. Over the course of several weeks in July, we're going to create opportunities for our students to meet together online with their Glow teachers, most specifically, their Glow Leadership Advisory teachers. And they're going to be learning all kinds of things, having great discussions, getting to know each other, getting to see each other's faces. And then in the first week in August, we're going to pull each of those small groups on campus for about two to three hours to do work on campus, meet teachers, tour the campus, get a sense for classroom spaces, learn about transitions on campus so that it feels familiar, so that when you come to school for the first day on August 17th, it's not like you're entering into the building for the first time. You'll totally know where the bathroom is. You'll totally know where to go get your lunch. You'll know how to ask for things on campus and who to face to look for when you need help. So all of those things will be answered. It's just going to happen in a little bit different way. Great question. Any other questions?
Hi, I have a question. Can you hear me? I'm on the phone. I couldn't get on the link.
Sure, yes, I can hear you.
Um, what, okay, I guess you're just waiting to see what happens with this Corona stuff moving forward as far as school starting on the 17th and being actually on campus?
So, yeah, so this is one of those zones where we are planning for best-case scenario, but we're also having our backpocket worst-case scenario, right? So our best-case scenario is that we start school on August 17th. We are on campus. We have a blended environment, so every kid has a laptop. Every kid is taught how to access their coursework online, but also are working with it on campus. So if we had to leave campus for some reason, they would have the tools that they need in order to continue learning without skipping a beat. Worst-case scenario is we don't go back to school on August 17th. My guess is we're probably going to be somewhere in between, right? That we are going to go back to school, but it's going to look and feel a little bit different, that we're going to pull smaller groups of kids onto school campus, that we're going to change the way we do transition, maybe keeping kids in class and transitioning teachers from classroom to classroom instead of transitioning students. What we don't know is all of the parameters for that, and it's not for lack of trying. So we have been looking at a lot of different plans from a lot of different states. Unfortunately, North Carolina has not given us guidance from the Department of Public Instruction yet about exactly what they would like to see happen. So we are kind of taking our cues from other states in what they're doing, and we're looking for the common thread practices across all of those, and we're building a plan around that. I promise you that as that solidifies, we will share it with all of our parents. If there is one thing that we have not been accused of is overly communicating. We over-communicate with parents about things like this, so you can make a plan for moving forward. It is on our top priority list, and we're working through it.
Okay, sounds good.
Sure. Sure.
I wanna talk about supplies.
We have two people, so I'm gonna say, Ms., Ms., is it Gibb can go first, and then Ms. Susan Mary Young can go second, okay? So, hold tight just for a second, all right, go for it.
Um, so I just wanted to talk in about purchasing of school supplies. Is, will we expect to see a list as we get closer to school?
Uh, thanks for that beautiful question. We have made it a core part of our mission at Glow Academy to provide the majority of required school supplies for our kids. So, so when she walks on campus, we will hand her all of the baseline tools that she will need to be successful in all of her coursework. One of the reasons why we do that is we, we want there to be uniformity, uniformity in all of those tools, so that everybody's working with the, the same stuff. Now, if your kid has a very particular type of pencil that she likes to use, I know Mr. Grayson lives in this zone, he is very particular with his tools. That is up to you, Ms. Carrie, Ms. Tomlin does as well. I particularly like felt-tip pens, just a preference. So, if there is something very specific like that, that is related to your kiddo, have at it and make that happen. But we'll provide baseline, and I can't predict everything off the top of my head, but we'll provide pencil pouches, pencils, expo markers, notebook paper, graph paper, a three-ring binder for her to use, erasers. What am I missing, guys? Did I hit everything? Looking pretty good, okay. And then, as we enter into the land of COVID-19, we're gonna look at some of those extra school supplies that we normally share throughout the course of the, of the year, that maybe we need to move into individual use, like, say, colored pencils. But, but we're gonna, we're kind of inventorying and making that guess. Ms. Sharp asked a great question, do we resupply throughout the year? One of the notorious things that middle schoolers do, really maybe all kids of all ages do, is burn through supplies, because they break pencils, or they leave them places, or they are forgetful. And so, we will resupply up to a point, but there might be a point when you're gonna have to step in and, and buy some pencils. But from the, from the, from the outset, we try to set everybody up for success with, with, with the same supplies across the school. All right. Susan Mary Young, I know that you had a question.
Okay, so my question is, is that, is the cooking classes like in school hours, or is it after?
That's a great question, it's totally in school hours. And I don't know if one of our cooking teachers is on this call, I'm looking in the screen in front of me, I'm not sure, but we had this.
Miss Beth is on.
Is Miss Beth on?
Yes, I'm here.
Yeah, Ms. Hollis is one of our cooking teachers. Ms. Hollis, do you wanna talk a little bit about what cooking looks like?
One second, yes.
Ms. Hollis has a new puppy.
Sorry, I did a puppy and he was screaming. So, we have tons of fun in cooking, we start at the very beginning, just assuming that nobody has cooked in the kitchen. And we do really recipes, all the way from appetizers to making homemade pasta, to doing soups, and just all sorts of measurements, and having a good time.
And where do you do that on campus, Ms. Hollis?
So, we have a culinary lab in the Student Center on campus, and it is a state-of-the-art, where we have four cooking stations. You wear an apron and a bandana, and it's just like going to culinary school, kind of, on a very lower level.
Awesome, thank you, Ms. Hollis, great question. Who else has a question?
About the uniforms?
Yes?
Um.
De la tienda.
The store. Is the store available?
So, Custom Logo Wear and Outfitters is available, they are open now. Maybe not right now, but they are not closed for business during this pandemic, so they're open. They, they have a physical store that's in Ogden, and they have an online store that is online. So, we'll send out that link so that you can access it. Here's what I suggest. First of all, parents, I suggest that you buy uniforms big, because Glow Girls in sixth grade and seventh grade grow like weeds. And so, she will grow very quickly in sixth and seventh grade. Secondly, I would suggest that you call Custom Logo Wear and Outfitters and set up an appointment time to go in and work with somebody very specifically at the shop to get fitted for uniforms, so that it's not crazy and crowded. You can get individualized service, and they'd be happy to do that for you. Third, we have a growing uniform closet at our school. And so, if getting uniforms is a struggle for your family right now, as we know, a lot of, a lot of families are struggling with, with being out of work in lots of pieces. Remember that we provide a top and a bottom for every Glow Girl that comes on board at our program. And here's the thing, we've got a lot of sixth-grade-sized uniforms in our uniform closet, because most of the uniforms that are in our uniform closet started out as sixth and seventh-grade uniforms, and those girls have grown out of them. So, if you wanna reach out to Ms. Daly, if you are needing some uniform assistance, we might be able to hook you up with some gently-used uniforms from our uniform closet.
Thank you.
You are so welcome, any other questions?
Yes, I have a question, could you guys hear me?
I can hear you, yes.
Um, I was just wondering, because I came in a little late on the call, and I, I wasn't able to get the screen up, is all this information gonna be emailed out? Just so I could do it back over, I didn't get all of it.
Yeah, for sure, we've made a recording of this, you can watch the video of this, and I'm gonna email the presentation to you as well, so you can have both to, to look back over.
Okay, thank you so much.
Of course, yes.
Ms. Hunter, I have a question.
Sure.
Um, what is your policy, or if you could enlighten me a little bit, of your kids, the kids having cell phones on the campus?
The ever-present cellphone question. Ms. Garza, do you wanna talk about cell phones? And Ms. Pat Shelton says, best question ever. Yes, this is, I feel like when we suit up every day, it's to deal with cell phones on campus. Go ahead, Ms. Garza.
I thought maybe it was a good time to pretend like my mic wasn't working, no? So, when it comes to cellphone use at Glow Academy, the expectation is that students are not on their cell phones. We are at school to learn. The expectation is, is that it is turned off from the beginning of the school day until the end of the school day, and out of sight, not in their pockets, but rather in their backpacks or jackets somewhere zipped up. And this is really a conversation that's not just about being distracted, it's about our Glow Girls giving themselves the opportunity, the right to be educated without having to be attentive to everything that pops up on their phone. Our students have what I call correspondence anxiety, you know? When, when I was growing up, someone left a message on the answering machine, and when I got home, I could listen to it and respond back, but I wasn't constantly being overwhelmed with having to respond to somebody right on the spot. And oftentimes, students are a little overwhelmed, because their parents might be texting them while they're at school, so I think it's important that I mention that. But our expectation is when, when they walk into the Glow Cafe in the morning, that their phones are off, and that they don't come back on until the end of the school day. There could be opportunities within a teacher's classroom where they pull out a cellphone to play a Kahoot game or something like that. But with us going to a one-to-one initiative, there would be no reason why we can't just use our Chromebooks. But if that situation would arise, that would be at the teacher's discretion and would be monitored by the teacher. But the expectation is that it's put away, because we have the right to disconnect during learning.
One of the, and to piggyback on that, one of the number-one things that I deal with, and Ms. Garza deals with as administrators on campus, is the use of social media to, for girls to have mean chats with each other. Drives me nuts, makes me crazy, because it's not happening on campus, it's happening off-campus. But I tell girls that if you are engaging with social media to say or do unkind or harmful things to each other, it's as if it's happening on campus, and I'm gonna be up in your business about it. So, parents, just be on the lookout for that, and know that I have no problems picking up the phone and calling you and letting you know what's happening off-campus with your girls and cell phones, as well as what's on-campus, because we live in a whole different world, where our kids are engaged in lots of online pieces. This is directly related to how kids see themselves and, and their own sense of well-being and purpose, and liked and valued. And we wanna help them to disengage from that a little bit when they're at school, so they can focus on themselves as learners, and as thinkers, and problem solvers. So, it takes, it, it, there's a lot of components to cellphone use. We don't ban them from campus, but we definitely say they need to be turned off. Any other questions? I'm sorry, I didn't hear the first part of your question, can you ask that again, please?
I'm sorry, my name is Dan. I was just asking, when does the college curriculum start, you know, filtering into their, their curriculum? Ninth grade?
So, we're, we always have our sights set on college. That begins right out of the gate, when they come into us in sixth grade. So, we have a lot of different components of our Glow program that are associated with college-going culture, college awareness, and building stamina towards rigorous college preparatory curriculum and supports. I'm gonna let Ms. Garza pick this up and talk a little bit about it. She heads up our academic program at Glow, and she really is the expert in speaking to college-going curriculum at Glow Academy.
Thank you, Ms. Hunter, for that segue. I think that, first and foremost, what's critical to understand is that there are several means to getting to college. There's not one specific pathway that a student has to take to get to college. That's not just true in life, that's true at Glow as well. And it does, it starts in sixth grade with developing really critical habits. And we'll work on those habits in Leadership Advisory class, so habits of organization, habits of, you know, solving problems, even if it, if that's social in nature, habits of self-advocacy, as Ms. Hunter mentioned before, and advocating for oneself, especially when it comes to assignments or extensions, those things. But as we start entering eighth grade, we do start to see, very specifically, some course requirements and course offerings change. So, if we look in our middle school handbook, one of the things that you can read are some opportunities to students in eighth grade to take high-school-level courses. And those high-school-level courses live in four different zones. Our ninth-grade Math 1, our Earth and Environmental Science, World History, and then potentially French 1 or Spanish 1. And those opportunities are available to our students, but they have to have demonstrated, honestly, strong work ethic. Because we wanna make sure that if we're pushing students into those higher-level courses, specifically higher level in this particular case, because they're at the next-grade level, that they're ready to put forth the work and energy into those courses. What that does is it doesn't set students up on a separate pathway. I think it's really important that I say that, because students that decide to just stick with their eighth-grade curriculum, they're gonna still be on a pathway to a successful college placement. But here's what it will do, it will open up courses. At the high-school level, students have to have 28 credits to graduate from high school. But in our high-school program, we offer nine course opportunities per year. One Leadership Advisory, and then four courses in the spring, and four courses in the fall, and then four in the spring. So, that's nine times four, so students have 32, wait, is that 32, 36? Opportunities to, to get their high-school credits. Students that have already tackled those courses in eighth grade really have the opportunity to take more elective courses. When they get into their junior and senior year, they will have the opportunity to enroll in the College and Career Program through Cape Fear Community College, which could afford to them some Cape Fear Community College classes. Outside of those opportunities, in addition to that, students that demonstrate real high levels of academic achievement, specifically in seventh and eighth grade, will have the opportunity as rising freshmen to engage in our Early Risers Program. This is a specialty program within our school, the only one of its kind in New Hanover and Pender County, where ninth and 10th-grade students have the availability to take classes with Cape Fear Community College as an opportunity to expose students early to the rigor of college coursework in a cohort model, where they move with their Glow Sisters into Cape Fear Community College classes. Those Cape Fear Community College classes are sometimes held on our Glow campus with a Cape Fear Community College professor. They may be held on our campus with a virtual Cape Fear professor. And sometimes, our students may actually go to Cape Fear Community College to take those courses. But again, as a cohort, we know that when students have early exposure and access to a college experience, that they are more likely to be successful when they initiate that first freshman year of college. And so, students that demonstrate high levels of academic success will have the opportunity to enroll in that Early Risers Program as emerging ninth graders.
Okay, I have one other question. I was just wondering, what kind of programs do you guys have for, like, after-school and tutoring programs? In case the, the girl needs help in a certain area?
Sure, I'm gonna speak to after-school program, but then I'm gonna invite members of our sixth-grade team to talk about tutoring opportunities. So, we have a free after-school program at our school. Next year, it will likely be offered in conjunction with support staff from the YMCA. And it is free to every student. The hours are four o'clock, which is essentially when we get out of school, to six o'clock. And there are different components of that program, one of which is some academic supports. But outside of that, our Glow teachers work really hard to support students and their student, and their learning. Glow sixth-grade team, do you wanna talk about opportunities for tutoring?
I'll start, Ms. Hunter. Hello, I apologize for being late, my name is Shirley Sharp. I'm the Humanities Social Studies teacher, so I'll be teaching your Glow Girl Social Studies this year. So, welcome, and thank you for coming. So, what we try to do on the sixth-grade team is allow the different disciplines or subjects to have potentially a morning tutoring time and an after-school tutoring time. And so, we usually look at our schedule to see how it works really well, so that if a student needs to have help in more than one subject, that there's, there's no conflict in scheduling. So, but we offer free tutoring in the mornings and after-school. So, I'm Ms. Sharp, sixth-grade Social Studies, whomever wants to be next.
Ms. Tomlin, would you mind talking a little bit? I'm totally putting you on the spot, but just because you're fabulous at it. Will you talk a little bit about how tutoring or office hours may look if we're in a virtual learning environment and not actually on campus?
That's been a really great opportunity, so in virtual learning-
So in virtual learning, um, all of us post our office hours, which is actually what I call my tutoring at school also, because girls are much more willing. First of all, that's what your college professor is going to call it, is office hours. And girls are much more willing to come and ask for help if they feel like it's an empowerment opportunity for themselves. They're coming to a teacher for their office hours so they can discuss material that they're, that they may be struggling with. Um, on Virtual World, it's actually pretty interesting. All of us post our office hours in our Canvas, um, on our Canvas platform, and girls can choose to set up an individual meeting with a teacher. And we meet in a Google Hangout, we go over the subject matter, um, they get really one-on-one attention, and it's a very successful opportunity for the kids. And it's, um, very flexible to work with whatever's going on in a family at that time.
Thank you.
When we're on campus, I also offer lunchtime office hours. A kid can sign up and come have lunch, and we can work on some stuff.
I saw a question in the chat about transportation and busing. Uh, yeah, I laugh, because that's one of the big unknowns in the land of COVID-19, right? Uh, so, uh, I'm going to speak in general to transportation, then I'm going to say that all might go out the window as we're looking at how many kids we could put on a bus and what's happening next year. But, uh, we do offer transportation within New Hanover County School, uh, New Hanover County lines. So we go from Carolina Beach to the Castle Hain, to the river, to Porter's Neck. Um, every year that we grow, our routes grow. And every year that we grow and add new kids, our routes get reconfigured. So Janice Romero, who is our Transportation Coordinator, uh, and Glow staff, namely Ms. Garza and myself, work really closely with her to, uh, map out routes and work with parents, uh, on those routes and times. Now, uh, we try really hard to get as close to houses as possible, knowing that we have kids that come from all over New Hanover County. And so if we were to pick up every single kid directly at their house, it would take five hours to run around, right? It would just be impossible. So, um, we try really hard to get within a quarter mile of people's houses as possible, so that we don't have kids walking very far. And we try to triangulate and get, um, kind of stops that we can get multiple kids at at one time. That doesn't always work out, you know, but we try to do that as best as we can. So, uh, so we try hard to work with families to make sure that, that kids are safe, that, uh, we're picking kids up and dropping kids off at appropriate times, and, uh, nobody is waiting too long or too far away from their house. Now, next year, that might change because we might not be able to put 40 kids on a bus at one time. Uh, and, and so we've got to figure that out. Uh, one of the things, that's one of the big things that the CDC is looking at and that, uh, school reopening plans are a part of. Uh, and, and so, so all of that might change. We might be on a staggered start schedule and a staggered dismissal schedule next year. Uh, we, you know, I don't, I don't, I don't have any solid answers to that. But in general, uh, that's kind of how transportation works. Uh, hopefully, within the next month, we'll have a better sense for what that's going to look like and feel like, and we will directly be in contact with you. Now, I'm going to tell you this. Other schools, like district public schools, will publish opportunities on their website to go online, look up your address, and see where your bus route is. We don't do that at Glow. And the reason why is because I value and take as sacred oath, really, the safety of our kids. And the last thing that I want to do is post on our website information about where groups of middle school and high school girls are going to be waiting for the bus daily, right? Uh, so you're going to get information from us regarding bus routes in various sundry ways, but it will not be posted to Facebook, it will not be posted to our, uh, to our webpage, because we really take, um, take student safety pretty seriously. Not pretty seriously, most paramount of consideration for us. Okay? All right. Any other questions?
Will sixth graders have lockers?
Uh, you win the prize for the most important sixth-grader question of the night. And, uh, Jerry Jones wins the prize of answering the most important question for sixth graders of the night. Jerry Jones?
I see that obligation of responsibility there happening. Uh, yeah, I'm sorry. Uh, no, we don't have lockers for sixth, for our middle school students or our high school students here at Glow. We decided to, uh, to spend our money on other things in the building. Sorry.
Lockers are so 1985 anyway. Nobody in the new world uses lockers. Time to evolve with the times. Yeah, that's the most disappointing thing to learn in sixth grade is that we don't have lockers at Glow Academy. Uh, but you know, there are lots of really wonderful things. And if you were to use a locker in middle school, you would only use it for a month anyway, and then you would never use it again. So we're just saving you that journey. Any other questions?
Uh, Ms. Hunter, for the gentleman who asked about after-school, um, you know, we also have, normally, we also have after-school programs as well, um, which, you know, once we found out what that's going to look like, we do offer some after-school programs.
Yeah, so we have lots of different clubs that we offer. This year, we had a Harry Potter Club, and we had Chess Club, and we had Science Olympiad. Um, we have a Photography Club, uh, we had a Running Club. We had, uh, some after-school, uh, sports opportunities. We had a soccer team this year. We had a competitive step team this year. Uh, we, and we're looking to grow our athletic program. But again, all of that might be a little bit on hold as we learn about what this next school year looks like. Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to mention to incoming families that we still have some spots available for the upcoming school year. So if they know other families that would benefit from having a Glow Girl, we would definitely love for you to visit our website or get in contact with me.
And this is a great opportunity for me to plug the fact that, uh, all of you are clearly on this call because you are interested in, uh, in a total, complete immersion into the Glow experience next year, which is great. But if you are on this call and you've said, yes, I'm going to Glow, but no, I haven't done the paperwork to fully enroll my Glow Girl, now is the time for you to get that paperwork completed and get it into Ms. Fernandez. You can do it online, or you can do it in paper. You can print it off online and hand it in in person. We'll take it however we can get it. We are happy to make it. But you have to turn it in in order for her to be fully enrolled. Any final questions tonight?
I just have a question about, um, I know that we're doing, uh, virtual due to COVID-19, but, um, as far as when the campuses are open, um, I just want to know about the safety and the security of, uh, the girls that are going to be in the campus. And also, I remember, um, the mentioning of a security guard, uh, being hired for the campus, and I just wanted to know how that process was going.
So we have, uh, on our campus, if you haven't been to our Glow Campus before now, uh, we have a campus that's made up of five different buildings. So it is not a completely closed campus in that girls in transitioning from one class to another might be transitioning from one building to another. But our Glow Campus is enclosed in a fence. Um, all visitors to and from campus have one point of entry, and that is through our front office. Our front office, uh, is a closed locked door, so you have to first ring the bell, get a photo, and our front desk woman, uh, our operator, Ms. Jacobs, will, uh, admit people in. That front office is, uh, is locked and secured as well. So the only way to get out of that front office, back into the school building, is to be either buzzed in or to have a, uh, a security card. All of our campuses, uh, all of the doors on our campus are locked and have card entry. And all of our students have cards, so they don't, uh, have to wait for the doors to be unlocked unless they forget their cards, which happens all the time because they're kids. Uh, they have to, uh, they have the power to go in and out of buildings themselves, which keeps our buildings locked and secured at all times. Uh, that also allows for us to keep a record of who's going into what buildings at what times. So it's great for us. We have over 50 cameras on campus to monitor all of the spaces that are on our campus, both in the perimeter of the fence and outside of the perimeter of the fence, so that we know who and what and where people are coming in and going around our campus. So, uh, we have as secure a campus as possible. Actually, we have more security safeguards in place than the majority of our, our New Hanover County Schools counterparts that have open campuses very similar to ours. Uh, the question about a school resource officer is a good one. Uh, these are ongoing conversations that we have in relationship to state funding for school resource officers on campus. Charter schools live in a different place than North Carolina District Public Schools when it comes to school resource officer funding. Uh, there is a school resource officer grant for which we have applied, and we are hopeful to move forward with, with getting a, a resource officer on campus in the near future.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. In addition to that, there's going to be the added kind of safety layer related to germs and proximity. Those questions are harder questions for me to answer right now, but I'll tell you that we are starting the process with adding extra sanitation stations, adding extra stations for, um, hand sanitizer, adding, uh, temperature checks for students as they come on campus and staff, uh, looking to add school nurse opportunities on campus, uh, to help with monitoring, um, uh, health and safety. So those pieces are another layer to the campus safety piece that we are, we're working on. Ms. Marilyn, you're muted.
Okay, I'm done. So Mom is asking with regards to getting more girls coming, um, to Glow. She currently lives in Pender County. Um, will there ever be transportation to Pender County?
That's a great question, and really and truly, uh, providing transportation is something that we choose to do at Glow. It is, it is not necessarily funded from the state level, but we, we opt to do that because we want to remove as many barriers as possible, uh, for our kids to be able to come to school. Uh, right now, we only offer transportation within New Hanover County lines. Uh, just from a cost perspective, that is the best that we possibly can do right now. But, uh, I, I can't guarantee that that will always be the case in the future. We might expand in the future, but for the moment, we just provide transportation within New Hanover County lines.
Okay, is it okay to, um, tell Mom that if there is a spot that's maybe on the borderline of New Hanover and Pender, that that may be a possibility as well? That they can drive or carpool to that area?
Yeah, so if you come over, uh, come over the county lines that are in New Hanover County and get to a, get to a bus stop, we can make that happen. We have a lot of kids actually that do that. In fact, a number of our kids actually live in New Hanover, I mean, in Pender or Columbus or Brunswick Counties, and they come to work with their parents in, in New Hanover County, and their bus stop is actually their parents' place of business. All right. If there are no other questions, uh, we've been going for an hour and a half. It's a long time to be meeting together. I love all of you for joining us. Thanks for, in, uh, coming and participating in this conversation. If you have any other questions, I will hang out here online. And if you want to ask them, um, I am all yours. If not, I'm going to say, uh, have a great evening. Uh, we'll send out the recording of this and the presentation and important links for you so you are armed with all of the information that you need in order to move forward with purpose. And I want to remind you to get your enrollment packets in if you haven't already done it. Uh, thank you so much for joining us, Glow staff. Thanks for joining in on this conversation today. Uh, you guys are always, as you know, rock stars. So, um, so thanks for participating. Have a great evening. Stay safe.